We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order seven P M. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance. Missy, you want to lead us? Hi, thank you. Missy, one, one, do roll call.
Prince. Robert.
Here.
Tanya, here. Libby, here. Becky.
Here. We have a quorum. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from the last meeting. It goes second for Becky. I.
Host.
Right. Motion carries. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we move part of the police chief's time up to now to introduce one of our new police officers. I make a motion to approve that.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed.
All right. Chief.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Been a long process, but we've got Terry Long who lives in town. He's going to be one of our reserves. We finally found a pre basic to get into over in Henry County. He has graduated that and has completed that and has arrest powers. Terry, if you want to come on up, please. Terry's a Marine Corps veteran and live in the community and might just introduce Terry. Wish you well.
Evening. I've lived in Fort Bill for the past three years. I volunteered at the campground just outside of town since I was fifteen, so for thirteen years. Community kind of raised me, so I'm interested to be a part of it and really hoping to give back to the community that helped raise me. Very excited.
Great. Thank you for your service, too.
I don't have anything else, that's all I need for that.
All right.
No, catch up on you.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, next item under new business is we have representatives from Land Works and Prince Alexander Architects to present F A I's landmark project, landmark park project to the council.
I'm going to go ahead and make an introduction. A lot of you know who I am, I'm Patrick Kelvin with Fortville Action Inc. And as you know, Fortville Action, Inc. In the past has been an event oriented organization where we put on numerous events around town for a long period of time. And in the last year or so, we've decided to kind of change directions and get more involved in community projects. And some of those projects, I think you're familiar with. We've recently completed a project in the alley and on the patio. And as part of moving in that direction, we've come up with numerous ideas on projects around town. And one of those projects is an improvement of landmark park. So we have contacted Land Works and we've contacted Prince Alexander, which are architectural firms. And we've asked them to kind of put together a general improvement. Like a better term, but project or improvement ideas for the park. Very general. And we thought we would present those to you tonight in hopes of seeking your approval for us to move forward and perhaps pursue some funding in the future from various organizations around town. But at this point in time, we just want to get, make you aware of it. And as I said, we're going to seek your approval to move forward with our, some of our plans and we'd be more specific than what we're going to show tonight. So I'm going to let them go ahead. This is Eric.
Good evening. Welcome. Ben's getting the, the presentation up on the screen for us. And this is essentially it's the same as this that you have in your hands. So yeah, I'm Eric Meunhausen with Prince Alexander Architecture and Ben Hool over here with Land Works. And when F A I came to us, talk about this project, we're pretty excited because I've been coming up to Fortville for a long time to some of the different events. Just seeing downtown grow and all the efforts that you've done. And it's, it's great. And so the one part of downtown that I think that is a logical next step is the, is the landmark park. There's some great space there right in the middle of town and it's right next to Main Street. But there's some, it's kind of underused, we feel like. So just briefly, a little bit about Ben and I, I've been with Prince Alexander for several years now. And Ben and I have worked on a few projects down downtown Indy, back Gulf, back nine Gulf is right on the White River. Big project we did together there. Ben's done a bunch of projects around the state, including Griffey Park down in Bloomington, which is a really cool one. But worked with lots of towns, municipalities and think that we can really help out here. And if you can get a next slide. Possible. There we go. So this is a shot of kind of the, the ditch along the north end of the park there. And it just demonstrates kind of the plain basicness there that you see. How it's underutilized, some of the infrastructure is decayed a little bit, the fountain's not operational, that sort of thing. But the idea is what else can be done there? How can we really activate this park? Daily uses, which are a little bit more tranquil than the other park on the other side of town. But then the big events that you host, that everybody loves coming to. So how can we find a way to improve this over, over a long amount of time and it's just in different phases? Sort of to really get the most out of, out of the. The next slide then. So, so far, what we've done, we've both visited the site several times and started to do some research about what activities are already there. What, how can we connect to the larger Fortville, to the larger Hancock County through the different trails and, and other efforts that are happening around town? We looked at what kind of events you have there, the Fourth of July, the big concerts, candy spots, things like that. And then what's there? So fortunately, there's a lot of really great infrastructure as far as electricity and sewer and that sort of stuff. So there's a lot of good building blocks that we can, we can continue to build from. There's a, you know, the gazebo, a little bit of place structures, that sort of thing, but really that's about it. So with that being said, we've, we've got a couple of images here, a couple of maps that Ben's going to talk about. And kind of show you how we want to connect everything together and then a couple of potential layouts for some real ones. As Eric said, my name is Ben Hool, I'm with Land Works Engineering. And I have done parks projects and civil engineering projects all over the state of Indiana as well as all over the country. And we have worked together on several projects, as he said, with Prince Alexander, have a very good working relationship. This part for me, like Eric was saying, feels like almost a missed opportunity. Like with everything that you've done on Main Street, with everything, all the vibrancy that's come in there, all the economic development and the economic now and money that it's starting to generate, this is less than a block away. And to be able to connect a tool like this to that and be able to tie the two in for events and that sort of things together is really important, I think, in kind of the taking the next step. If you want to go ahead. All right, we might want to look on your sheet because you probably can't see too close on here, but I'll point out a couple of things. This just shows a little bit of the research that we took a look at. There are a couple of different studies that have been done, including the Hancock Trails Plan and Connect Fortville. And we just kind of wanted to see how those treated landmark park in general and what kind of the plans for the town or the county had thought of as they were kind of moving through these different plans and development then. And it was pretty interesting. It's, it's relatively close and actually has some pieces and parts to it that would connect both with the, the park just to the west and then also connecting to the county trail system as you head to the east as well. Go ahead. So going from kind of the thirty thousand foot, now we're down into town a little bit, you guys always have those a little bit closer in. This kind of takes those elements that were from the, especially the Connect Fortville and zooms in on them a little bit. So you can see there actually is a connection that is desired to happen, to go over to Memorial Park, potentially along the waterway there. And then also kind of out to the east of town and trails that were potentially planned for the future with the county. So landmark park being in the middle of that and being a connector for those places seemed like a really good place to start. Also, you'll see on here, there's, we pointed out kind of a, a key entry point there next to the church on the roadway that comes in and essentially dead ends into the park. That's kind of a nice little area where you, as you're walking down Main Street, something that you could visually see as you're walking down to be able to connect to. So putting, maybe putting an entry feature or something like that there that we'll get to on the next slide there. So yeah, we wanted to take a look at all that. I thought it was very interesting with the pedestrian bridges there. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the pedestrian bridge. I think it's a really cool feature to have. I think it's probably needs to be upgraded a little bit. But to be able to bring folks from the neighborhood, the old neighborhood that's to the north, northeast and bring them that way, even if it's to get to Main Street, but coming through that direction as opposed to having to go all the way over to Main Street or kind of at a wrong, wrong way diagonal. All right, so in the evaluation, just chit chatting about possibilities and that sort of thing. We know Fortville Action with their concert series that they helped and volunteered to help put on and was relatively successful, that having some sort of stage there, potentially a covered stage, something at least with the capability of maybe having a little bit of some lighting or some power or that sort of thing, a little bit larger than just the concrete pad that's out there and maybe a little bit more thought put in there to be able to have it oriented in such a way that it's useful and connects to that Main Street as well. So this is not, obviously, you know, this is kind of first draft that we're kind of taking a look at. There's another one after this, and this is what the kind of thing that we would work through as kind of next steps as well. But you can see here, like I said, the entry feature potentially right there at the, at the end of Church Street. A shelter both for a revenue generator, potentially to rent the shelter out at different times during the year. And also someplace to potentially house, whether it's ticket sales for something or concessions or that sort of thing as well. And then a restroom slash concession building and the location of all these kind of can shift around a little bit. But what we were trying to accomplish was to keep the peacefulness, the passiveness of the park. You know, this doesn't need to have sports facilities on it, doesn't need to have a merry go round, you know, that kind of thing. It, it keeps the passiveness, but also keeps the open space for the larger events that you have to be able to connect and have those possibilities there. We also think putting in a creek front path there and something that would kind of start the process for connecting those trails and maybe even start the thinking of getting that over to Memorial Park. But putting something like that, there would be a really good idea and connecting that with a new pedestrian crossing there across the creek. Go ahead. This just imagines it in a little bit different configuration. We kind of look at covered stage over on the other corner. In this instance, you have a little bit more open space there, a little bit further to the west. But maybe then the music is playing toward Main Street, so it's a little bit, you can hear it more if there's other things going on up and down Main Street as well. So just different thought processes about how people operate and want to travel through the space, both from Main Street and in through the park or potentially around the park and back out. I know the street on the south is sometimes used for food trucks as well during events. So there's possibility of tightening that in or maybe closing down a different street to have the food trucks, it's a little bit more adjacent. So all of these things are, are things that we will think through kind of as a, as a next step. But this is just some ideas kind of throwing out there, what could be possible. Again, with the creek front path, the new pedestrian crossing, that sort of thing as well. So next step, and I'll call Eric back here in a minute, but it's essentially, those were kind of first steps to think through those a little bit more with stakeholders like yourselves, but also then asking for some input from community stakeholders. What do you most want to happen out there? What do you think is going to both draw the most attention to the park, but also make the most sense with other things that are going on with the town, right? That sort of thing, taking that and then refine it, refining it and developing a preferred layout. Yeah, and so I mentioned a brief before the basic aspect. As we work through the design of what could be there, we're getting it, but we might find that there's a, there's a huge priority for a covered stage. So let's focus enough or something that I've been running and then we end up maybe over time as money becomes available, then put it in a rest room, however it is. So definitely facing it and putting up creative ways to make it happen over time. The other thing too, that we want to keep in mind is the maintenance aspect of this, we want to do something that's a pretty low thing. But we could, we could work together, that'll come up with costs and budgets and things like that as part of this. Yeah, walk in the park with Joe and the park's department with Eve over there, that was essential. When we started talking about water features, he was like, whoa. Yeah. You know, but those kinds of things, you know, getting that kind of input, both on the, the maintenance aspect, but also what, you know, maybe was necessarily lockable. So we don't want anything to look happening there or inside or that kind of thing, whether that's remotely lockable or lockable or on a schedule or that kind of thing. So all of those kinds of elements playing into what we want to do there as well. Yeah, and the last thing, you know, the park has great monuments existing, so if we want to incorporate those, are there other opportunities, both the garden, monuments or landmarks? To really, really add on to the main streets, the downtown Fortville, and to do as, you know, the whole neighborhood. Signage that works to develop other city aspects of, so all of that. And maybe bringing the light to some of the things that are already there for the best gazebo or some of the walks that are through there and making sure that they stay the tree.
So that we were, as I said when I first got started, we're not looking for funding at this point in time. We're not looking for specific feedback. We're just making this presentation to give you, to let you know what F A I is. Our next project would like to be. And then we want to move on if we can get your support and say, yeah, we think this is a good idea to go out and look for funding from other, from sources. We're not coming here and say, we want you guys to pony up a hundred thousand dollars or five thousand, that's not what this is all about. We just want you to say, this is okay, we think this is a great idea, move forward with this, keep us in the loop. Let us know when it's time, perhaps, and start looking for funding and support financially from the, from the town. Our next step is going to go to, we're going to be going to the R D C to make a similar presentation. And I'm sure, as you know, they have a few dollars and that would probably help us move forward with these folks here to get a more specific plan in place that we can then present to the town and the community and get the feedback we need in order to and support, assuming we still can continue to get support at that time, to move forward with this project. So that's where we are. So we're looking to see if we can get some kind of support from you tonight. I don't know if that takes a, a resolution that the council has to vote on, or if this is just individual town council members saying, yeah, I think this is a good idea. However, you guys want to do that? So that's what, that's where we are.
Thanks, Pat.
To Pat's question, you guys can voice your opinions by consensus. If there is consensus, we can be more formal than that down the road or however you like.
I have a question. So are you planning on taking out the screens and the playground stuff that's there for kids? I think that's important. I mean, kids use that a lot.
I wouldn't say at this point we're planning on taking anything out.
Okay.
I think at this point, it's just trying to gather information about like that, like what is used today and what should be there for tomorrow, that kind of thing, absolutely.
And assuming we move forward with a plan, there's going to be meetings held throughout town, inviting folks from the town to come in and provide us with input on what they want. This is not us, F A I and these gentlemen saying, this is a plan we got together this, this way, sugar. But we want, this is just seeing if we can move forward with something that the whole community can be involved in, in putting together a facility that everyone can move. Certainly, no one has any plan to remove any of that.
Yeah, because we don't have much play, that's the way it is. We don't want to take any out. I like the plan overall, I just don't want to be turned, see it turned into a big venue thing to where the kids aren't going to be allowed to get in there and play. Right.
Yeah, that's when we were looking at this, we realized that the daily uses, you know, when I analyze, what, what do, what do people need to care for today? And how can we support that? And then what do you have these monthly, yearly events, how can we accommodate those, whether it's sound, power, those kinds of things? Like how can we support what's happening there? And are there some other events that might like the?
Yeah, I think some, people used to have weddings in the gazebo. I don't know if they still do or not, but they used to.
I, so any other, any other questions or discussion? I, I think the way that you've put it, Pat, is best and you, and you two gentlemen, I think that I'm comfortable proposing they move forward with determining the scope at this point, right? The scope of the project as far as what we want to do. And no final determinations, obviously, the community input's going to be involved. You mentioned you're going to go to the R D C, that needs to come back. So I'd make a positive recommendation to allow F A I and, and their contractors to move forward to help determine the scope of what they're proposing for landmark park.
Yep. Great. Yep.
So.
Exciting.
They get it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a motion there, do you want to say it?
I'll say it.
All right. All in favor?
I didn't hear it, but okay.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for all your work, guys.
All right, moving on to old business. Council to consider second reading of the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance number twenty-two-two dash eleven B. Joe?
Just like last council meeting, I prepared the ordinance for first reading. And I got it here tonight if you want to consider it or if you have any discussion.
Any questions for Joe or any comments?
I have a comment, you know, I always have a comment. I've looked at the salaries we've given over the last four years since I've been on the council, maybe a year before I start up. We've given like a thirteen percent raise overall. The highest paid employee from last year's salary makes eighty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. The lowest paid employee makes forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. I just feel like we should start trying to close that gap. I mean, I know the utility workers shouldn't make as much as, you know, the people in the office, but then, you know, I always go back to them because I see them out there in the snow and the rain and they are the ones that do the hard work, not maybe so much individually as physical. I think we should take the three percent raise for all the employees is fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars a year. I think we should take that and put it in a pot, divide it by the number of employees and give everybody the same amount. Which would be about nineteen hundred dollars. Excuse me. That will help close the gap between the lowest paid and the highest paid. I mean, I know Joe has trouble getting street utility workers, we get their pay up a little bit, maybe that will help. So that's what I want to propose that we do.
Questions, comments? Or I'll go out and say, I don't know that I'm ready to make a determination on the second reading of this going forward tonight. We, obviously, we can take an consideration of Becky's comments, but I think that more discussions needed on this, obviously.
Yeah.
And I'd like Fritz to be here for that conversation. We always try to make that all of us here for the salary.
Yeah.
Conversations, and he's unable to be here this evening, but we obviously have Becky's recommendation to consider and to think about. Joe, can you put that on the next agenda? Are there any other questions or comments about it? I don't want to cut it off there, we got other things we want to discuss.
It sounds like a good idea, I don't know if it's realistic, I think that's a course will that.
What's it evenly?
I think that's a good idea. That's what they did when I first came on the council and I checked with them on their raises, that's what Kathy told me they did, the way they did it.
My, my concern, and I saying it's a bad proposal, but my concern on that is with inflation being what it is right now. You know, who's to say that the folks, I, I think what you're trying to do is get the, you know, increase, that, that'd be a larger percentage raise for those on the, on the lower end of the pay scale than the top. But at the same time, are those, I mean, I don't, I don't think you're saying, are those at the top, at the upper end of the scale, any less deserving of?
No.
They'd be behind, they'd be further behind inflation.
The lowest end of the scale honestly have more trouble making wins than the highest.
I understand.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, we need some more discussion on that for sure, because I, I understand what you're saying. Additional questions or comments? Joe, anything? Alex, anything? Okay. Yes, sir. All right. All right, we're going to, that's on the next agenda?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so next agenda on that one. All right, item four B has been removed from the agenda. And we're going to move on to department reports. Joe?
The only thing I have to say.
The only thing I have this evening is they did get Ohio Street paved since our last council meeting. And they will be in here a week after Thanksgiving, hopefully, to start doing some of the sidewalk work of our road reconstruction projects that we've gotten the funding through N dot four. So I know it's not total reconstruction or replacement of sidewalks, but it's the bad sections are getting replaced. ADA ramps are getting installed where we're doing the work. but it's the bad sections are getting replaced, ADA ramps are getting installed where we're doing the work as, as required. They're going to be starting that after Thanksgiving. I don't have a whole lot of time with the weather.
For those that may not already know, which part of Ohio Street was paved?
It was paved from East Broadway all the way out to the east town limits.
So.
It's also 1050.
Out in the past Winston, that section of Ohio Street.
Right. A lot of people know it, know it as County Route 1050, but it's now Ohio Street since it's in town.
Yeah.
That's all I've got this.
Oh, anything for Joe?
Update for the water?
Yes.
Do you want to?
I really didn't go around, have the details with me to be able to share. It, it is starting to move along. It looks like they've got the filters delivered. It looks like target date of March is still there. So they're, they're really, you know, juggling things around and trying to make that happen.
All right. All good on the, what others here? Salt Barn's full?
Yes, Salt Barn's full. We've got the road salt, and then we've got the salt sand, and the other bay and the salt barn, they're both full.
And new trucks ready to go?
Trucks ready to go, salt spreaders on, hopefully we don't need them.
All right. All right.
That's right.
Adam is not here, anything for plan, Joe? Heath is joining us via, well, he was joining us via Zoom. Is he still there, Heath?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Perfect. Hey, I just got a couple of things. First and foremost, the bridge materials are not in yet. Hopefully, they'll be in this week, obviously, with us being off Thursday and Friday. I'm hoping to get it completely demoed, at least the deck tomorrow. And we'll see if the materials come in. I'm a little hesitant to demo it before the, the decking is there. But it's going to take a little while with demo, so that's the plan for that. I don't know if anybody has heard yet or not, and if Pat's there, he can shed a little bit more light on it. We had some issues at the community center over the past, last weekend. We had approximately anywhere from 20 to 30 kids. I don't want to say break in, but essentially broke in and trespassed within the community center. The fire alarm was pulled, pulled hard enough that it broke the fire alarm. We're working on getting that fixed. With that being said, due to all the cameras that we put in, the police department has trespassed at least four individuals. At this point in time, that's, I think, where it's going to stay. But with that being said, we've got, the, the cameras are doing their job, I guess, is what I'm saying. And we're, we're going to start, hopefully, making some progress with keeping some of the, the vandalism and some of the issues at bay. So the police department did a great job. Officer Allen has been working with me as far as identifying some kids. And they range anywhere from the age of 14 to 20 years old at that point in time. So we're, we're working through that. But just know that the money that we spent with the cameras is starting to pay off a little bit, and hopefully, we'll be able to keep things much better moving forward. The last thing that I have, I know we have already had conversations, and it's been approved for Winterfest, and the road being closed that morning until the end of Winterfest. All that's already been approved. I'm actually asking the council tonight, just based on the number of volunteers and the things that we have to set up for Winterfest, if, see if it would be okay with the council and with Chief Brad. And if he's there, if we can close that little section of Main Street between Stat and Church to get the skating rink set up on Friday evening as opposed to Saturday morning, because we will have to do the stage and quite a few other things Saturday morning as well with, I don't want to say limited volunteers. We have quite a few volunteers, but I, I don't want to have to just do things very quickly. I would rather get things done and make sure they're done right. So I'm asking the, eight o'clock on Friday night, just close that little section of Main Street between Stat and Merrill to get the skating rink and everything set up for the kids' zone. That's all I have.
Eight PM, which night?
On, on Friday evening. Yeah, the night before Winterfest.
Do you know what time the vandalism is happening out at the park?
Uh, so they, little quick background on that. Somebody, my best guess is somebody that had properly rented the community center had opened up the very back door in the gym at some point in time over the last week and a half. Nah, it's probably been a little bit longer than that. We'll say two to two and a half weeks. They opened the back door up, the back door didn't get closed all the way, and one of the kids found it. And what happened was they actually stuck a rock in the door to the point where the door looked like it was shut, and everything looked like it was shut, but you could actually pull it open. And so the kids were coming in there, quote unquote, playing basketball every day from, as far as my camera and the gym went back, which was not this past Monday, but the Monday before. And they were in there anywhere from one o'clock on a Saturday. I actually heard them, I was in my office a week ago Wednesday, and I heard basketballs going, and I actually caught them and kicked them out and had asked them, you know, hey, we're, we're working on some things to do, maybe some open gyms for you guys who want to play basketball. And I told them that they weren't allowed to be back in there. And then there were Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they were back in there every single day. There were some issues, there were some property stolen. Obviously, the fire alarm was pulled. So we have a good idea of, of who it is, and like I said, the police department's working through that. But as far as the time, it just kind of varied. Thankfully, thankfully, like I said, we, we've got cameras covering essentially the entire park at this point in time. So they're doing their job.
Any other questions for Heath? We need a motion for him, he's asking for it, but do we have any other questions? Anything else, Becky?
No.
I make a motion to approve the closure of Main Street between Stat and Church as presented or as requested by Heath.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion passed.
Thank you. And real quick, we'll, we'll let everybody know in that little section. I know there are some residents over there, so we will have that conversation with everybody just to make sure that they know that that evening, we just, we got to start setting up earlier. We don't have a choice.
All right, appreciate that, Heath.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Missy?
I really don't have anything, unless you guys have something for me?
Anything for Missy? All right. Chief?
All right. We're finishing up our yearly training. The state mandates, we do a minimum of 24 hours of, of training for every officer. Most officers have exceeded that this year. There are still a few, but we have that in the works, so we'll be all done with that. Speaking as for Heath and through the parks, we are working with Heath very well. The cameras are great. Officer Allen works at the school quite frequently, so he knows a lot of these children that come through and probably have some issues at school and issues out in the public. So he identified most of them, and we are working with the juvenile justice system to see what we can do, whether it's community service or, or some sort of, you know, let's not send them to jail. Let's, let's do something community sort of service oriented. So we are working through that. Obviously, December's a busy month for us. Roads starting to get nasty, it's the holidays, everybody's buying stuff, and then everybody tends to start stealing stuff, so we're reminded to the public, please lock your cars, please hide all your valuables, please hide your presents, not only from the kids, but from everyone. The 10th, we're having our shop of public safety. Right now, we only have six applicants, which is extremely low. So if there are people that would like to join us and feel that there's a need to come shop with us, please. Our applications are supposed to be due by the end of this week, but we're going to extend it out to December 3rd. We have reached out to the schools and the churches to get their list also. So we, we are working through that. And I want to thank the community again, once again, every year they write checks, and, and that's the only way we can do this program. So I really appreciate all the help we get from the community, business owners, just the people in the community as a whole, they all come together. And I know a lot of it looks like we've done a lot. We're strictly the people that drive them there and get to go with them. If without the community and the, the businesses, we would have that support. So thank you to all of them.
I think that's it for now. Unless you have questions? Questions for Chief? That's why I need another plug for shop, plug sake.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Pat. Alex?
The only thing I have is I need a motion to certify that we only discussed in executive session the topics that were advertised.
Make a motion. Okay, how do we want to say this? I'll make a motion that we held an executive session and only discuss the items that were advertised.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
And with that, unless you have any questions for me, that's all. Yeah. Anything for Alex? Okay. This is the time where we open this up for public comments. So there are any public comments, if there are, come to the microphone, please, state your name.
My name is Dave Fisher. At the last council meeting, the ball was kind of thrown in Adam's court as far as any progress on demolition of the building at 533 Swan Drive. And I'm just wondering, I know Adam isn't here, but has he reported to you on any progress?
So I, I don't, I'm going to let Alex and Joe handle this. Yeah.
After the council meeting, that next day or the day after, Adam did send notice to Jake saying, look, one, what's your plan? Because as you all know, we've laid out for Jake the options, you know, get variance, try to keep going, or if he needs to take it down, then let's take it down. And, and also Adam's notice to him said, like, if something does not happen, then the town's going to look at moving forward with enforcement proceedings, you know, to address the non-compliant, have-built structures. So Jake's been put on notice. There could be, have been conversation between Jake and Adam after that that I've not been pretty to. But I do know that Adam reached out, as was discussed at the last meeting.
Is there any kind of time limit on the action that the town would take?
I think Adam said we needed to, to see something somewhere in the, in the next 30 days. Is that what, I, I may not be remembering it correctly, but he did say, this can't go on indefinitely. We need to see something happen. So I don't want to mislead you, but I know that there was a, a component to his notice that was, let, let's see some action one way or the other.
I don't know if it means anything, but my dog got in Jake's yard, and I went over there. They'd been partying, and then, but he told me it was coming down. Now, like I said, they were partying that day, and it was kind of not a normal conversation.
You have more knowledge about it than, than I do, and, and that may very well be the case. But I do know, I do know that, as I said, Adam, as requested by the council, and as we discussed in the last meeting, did send out that notice right away. It was either the next day or the day after. What, sounds like it's still up, so nothing has happened to that, but the clock is ticking.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
My name's Denise Conklin, and I live down the street, too. I know at the last council meeting, we had originally been told at the meeting before that it was in the hands of the insurance. And then at the last meeting, we were told it wasn't in the hands of the insurance because litigation had not, had been threatened, but not started. So I think honestly, some of us left a little bit like, hmm, what?
Let me, let me clarify. That's my fault, I wasn't clear.
Okay.
So the town's insurance, we had a written threat of litigation from Jake's attorney alleging a host of things against the town. When that happened, we provided that threat to the town's insurance agent, but then our insurer on notice that we've got this threat. The insurance agent gave the town, gave all of us certain instructions that can't necessarily, you know, provide in the public meeting, but our insurance agent is aware of it, apprised of it, and is in communications with the town about it. But there won't be anything as far as a settlement or anything like that. There's no claim that's been made, we just have this threat. So that's, I'm sorry for causing the confusion. So that's what I'm, I meant to express when I said it's in the insurance, the town's insurance carrier's hands. But in tandem with that, we're, like I mentioned to the last gentleman, issued the notice to, to Jake to say, hey, this can't just go on indefinitely. We need to see action one way or the other.
Okay, that, that's, that helps. One thing you said today, that Jake could pursue a variance, is so that is still on the table? That a variance allowing him to have this building that violates the ordinance? Is that what you mean?
Yes, I mean, that's available to any, so, I mean, the, the building's out of compliance. It's too tall, for example, things, and then talking about the town's codes. I know that, that you all have your own private covenants, that's a separate issue apart from that. But one avenue that Jake does have available to him would be to file a petition for a variance to allow the building to be taller than the primary structure. There may be a couple other variances that would be needed, but I know that's the, that's the main one.
Alex, that would go through which body?
That would go through the Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA. When, if that happened, all of you and your neighbors, everyone out there would receive specific notice, not just the notice in the newspaper that we would have a public hearing on that. You would get notice, a letter from the town saying, hey, on such and such date, BZA meetings start at 6:30 PM, we're going to have a public hearing on this petition for a variance on this building. All of you would have the ability to come to that hearing and voice your concerns, support, opposition, I suspect, one way or the other there. So you would know, so yes, that is available to them, but that is not something that Adam can approve. It's not something that this council could approve, that would be in the hands of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So is that tied in with the new zoning meeting that was the last week?
It, it's not. It's, so that, that is really just separate. If it's related at all, I would say, and, and we've, we've talked about this, the current, some of the current town zoning code and the development standards, it's a one-size-fits-all generally. Instead of really taking into account, we really have, as the town has grown, have some different areas that it makes sense to have some different standards. We've got, your neighborhood is not necessarily the same as Old Town, right? Down, just the way that it's developed. And so that's what that meeting is about, is taking a look at the current zoning code and finding areas like that where it would make sense to modify and have a lot of, one way to get there is you have overlay, so an Old Town overlay. So these standards would be in Old Town, and then that's what that meeting's about.
Okay.
So I suppose you could say that the situation that's happened in your neighborhood with Jake's The situation that's happened in your neighborhood with Jake's property probably added some fuel to the fire to to make that happen, to to. Expedite that so that hopefully we can avoid some of these issues in the future, but it's not directly related to it.
Yeah, and I I don't think any of us are. Got any enjoyment out of. This whole situation. I think that. If anybody thinks that.
And thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up, sir.
My name's Carl Hickel. I'm here to speak for Jake tonight. He couldn't be here. And he wanted me to let you guys know that. Him and his attorney is in talks with the general contractor. And they're getting places. But I don't know if we're gonna have a solution here in the next few days. But, uh, he did say that either him or myself can be here at the next meeting to keep everybody informed of what's going on. Any questions you may have?
All right. Yes, thank you for coming. All right, any other public comment? All right, seeing none. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to, oh, sorry, guys. Um, look at me, look at me, yeah, right? Livy?
Well, I have a lot to talk about. I'm just kidding.
All right.
I'm kidding.
I know, I gotta go back. Um, Becky?
Nothing.
Only thing I had was I just want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. Uh, thank you for everybody coming. Um, means a lot. Hopefully you got in the tour of the new place. And with that, I'll. Make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion carries, and I make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty.
My second. All in favor?
Thank you, everybody.